Final Platte and Street. Those are the items on our agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Yes, I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, tonight we have public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to make a public comment? We'll skip that session then and go right into new business. All right. Ed, can we call on you for the city manager update?
Yes, sir. I've got a couple of things for you. The villages at Harris Creek, they are now selling homes out there. They've got their website up and running. So Liberty Communities is ready to get moving. They've got homes that are 2,000 to 2,800 square feet. The starting price is $330,000. They've currently got four houses under construction out there, so you can have a chance to drive through it. Looks nice and that's going to be a great addition to that neighborhood out there. Secondly, the 2023 general election is November the 7th, 2023. Qualifying for mayor and council will be held August 21st through August 23rd from 8:30 until 4:30 at West Point City Hall downstairs, community development. Qualifying is provided by the Truick County Board of Elections. Of course, the mayor and council set the qualifying fees earlier. For mayor is $214.20 and for council is $151.20. And that can be paid by check, cash, or money. And our current seats are Mayor Steve Chmalo, council members in the morning, Council General Ledbetter and Council Dean Williams. And the qualifying that we posted already is, I think, on the city website and on Facebook page. We had to post here to see how many requirements of state law.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, we'll move on to the budget counter. Back to you.
Yes, sir. Y'all got that in your packet. Of course, today is August 1st, birthday of the calendar, and y'all are taking form of the budget process. We'll go through our standard process of reviewing and compiling the budget. Those dates are listed there. Then on October the 31st, the budget package will come to the council. We'll present the budget at that time. There'll be an article in the paper with the proposed budget. We'll make a draft available to the public. We'll be copies of the draft budget that go to the news media. And we'll have draft budgets available on the city website. So we should have all public access. Public presentation will happen October 31st. November the 13th will be the first public hearing. November the 28th will be the second public hearing. And then, as follows well, December the 11th, we'll present to the council once the final consideration is over.
All right, so any questions regarding that? All right, then let's move on to the Am Waste Amendment to Agreement.
Yes, sir. We talked about this in the last work session, not the building meeting. But we made those amendments that we discussed, which will be to continue to have recycling on Thursdays. And it will still stagger from week to week to the end of year of the week collection. We did change the language there to just say weekly basis instead of putting the date to let tie to the date. If we ever want to change that. And the same for the pickup dates. We'll put Monday through Thursday for the trash garbage collection. That way, Am Waste intends to pick up on Tuesday and Wednesday. That's when they intend to pick up trash, the entire city. So, but this was a good plus doing the deal that I made in the contract. If there wasn't any change, of course, council would have been made aware of that prior to that occurrence. So that's the two changes to the contract that we have negotiated with them. They're confident that we're ready to move forward.
It's not technically part of the contract here. I would like to see us take some hit and leave it on a dumpster. When we can.
From location for?
For West Point. Yeah. I took a truckload of clean out stuff in Hammy's classroom. It cost me $27. As a Truick County taxpayer, I think the camera's rolling, to deliver garbage to a Truick County dumpster. And I know we pay taxes for sanitation, so.
We could darn toot.
It's a little off footy.
What, sir, would that be in the budget process?
I'd rather give my $27 West Point and have it get canceled.
We appreciate that.
Any other questions regarding the Am Waste Amendment? Okay, then we will move on to the surplus city property. And Kristen, can we call on you for that?
In your packet, you have a sample for city surplus. There's four vehicles that are currently no longer in service, meaning either they have too expensive to repair them or they just are too old to do anything with. So the process after, if you guys decide to use surplus those items, we'll put it on gov deals to sell. Bid process. It includes descriptive pictures to inform the buyer, conditions of the vehicle, including detailed process of the final fire for the end of sale, I mean, the bill of sale at the end. I don't know if you need any more information, but if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Any questions, y'all, on surplus property? All right, then we will move on to the West Point Housing Authority Utility Agreement. And I need to call on Sammy and Alex. I don't see Sammy, so I guess I'll follow up on Alex.
I can give you the.
Oh, wait, Sammy's right there. Alex right over you.
Good.
I'm sorry.
I can give you the lowdown on it. He can tell you the legal points.
Okay.
Sometime last year, probably about this time, we was contacted through our subscriber regulatory compliance contractor about the Public Service Commission looking at master meter, specifically housing authorities for the gas systems in Georgia. And they had a lot of questions about the one in West Point. I wasn't clear about that, so the contractor and myself, we went to Atlanta and sat down and talked to the people with the PSC. Come to find out that our housing authority is not and has never been a master meter operator. Certificate issued to them by the state of Georgia. We'd done a lot of digging. Trying to make this shorter if I can. We'd done a lot of digging and found out the housing authority was first initially put in somewhere in the early 60s. Maybe 1959 is when it started. More digging, we found in, I think, is section 6A of some document in the early 80s that mentioned that the city would own and operate the utilities inside the housing authority. It specifically mentioned the water sewer, storm drains, but it didn't mention the power and the gas. Good reason for the gas, it wasn't put in in 1992. Again, we looked and there was no master meter certificate issued for the West Point Housing Authority for power. Matter of fact, there's never been a power master meter certificate issued to any housing authority in the country. So that got us to digging and looking. And we come up, we dug some more and we found that the gas was put in in the housing authority in 1992. And there were some signatures from Leon, the former utilities superintendent, where they signed off on it. But there's, the Public Service Commission's problem was this system was in. It was not shown on anybody's map. It was never permitted. It was not in existence, and that posed a problem legally for them. Thankfully, a couple of years earlier, there's always been some uncertainties about the utilities over there. I think we've got them straightened out now. We finally took over the surveying of the system over there every year. It's just too dangerous to have a gas system in with that many people living there and never being surveyed. Little bit after that, maybe a year or two, we witnessed some bad attempts by a local contractor to make some repairs on the gas system. So we took those over. So that had the Public Service Commission satisfied that we were safely doing what needed to be done under the guidelines of the city's policies. But still, for their reasoning, nobody was on file as owning that gas system over there or the power system. Long story short, they just, they wanted the city and the housing authority to enter into some type of legal agreement so we would have it on file, saying that we would own and operate the systems going forward for safety and legal purposes. And that's where Alex came in, and he's handled that part very well.
Do you have anything to add, Alex?
No, I agree with everything you said. I mean, it's necessary, but the housing authority can't own it. Now, this simply documents the city owning it. All of those utilities within the housing authority.
Pretty much.
I mean, it should have been done for now, but.
If we could go back and dig and dig and dig, I'm sure there's some files somewhere. Or maybe they got discarded or misplaced with moving around the city. But they're probably, one of them, we just couldn't put our hands on. So satisfy the PSC. And probably us going forward too, if something ever happens over there, which shouldn't happen.
So explain to me what the master meter concept is. All of the.
Yes.
Usage and billing is on one account?
Right.
And then they just distribute it to?
And Richard has more knowledge of that than I do. We think that those meters were put in for convenience, for billing purposes, way back in the 60s. Of course, none of us was here. We can't say for sure that's why they were done that way. But we do have some documentation where we would take over and own it and operate it after that. But yes, there was a one electric meter, one gas meter, and one water meter. But all the individual units have their individual electric and gas meters, which we will start reading them after y'all sign this. We will take them into our, and start reading them.
So the meters have been there, but we haven't been reading them?
No.
Because we didn't build that way?
There's one large meter.
That you read?
Where it goes into, and then there's a network of pipe and a wire and however you want to look at whichever one. And everything gets billed individually behind that meter. And the housing authority reads those meters. And they take those readings and base them with our reading every month to try to balance it out.
So if you live in one of the units, you don't get charged what everybody else gets charged? You get charged what you use based on what your meter read? But the city's not involved in reading it and billing you. The housing authority is?
Not now, but going forward, the city will read each one of those meters individually. But we will still send all of those bills directly to the housing authority. And the housing authority will pay those bills to the city.
But before now, it was done the way I just described?
Yes.
Okay, so in 1959, whenever it was when all this got started, it was okay for us to, for it to be done that way? But now?
Well, it's still okay if you want to master meter it. There's some gray areas in the laws nationwide, really. It's not just, it's not unique to Georgia. You'll find a lot of apartment complexes and stuff. They can master meter. And then they, you actually can upcharge that to a certain percentage to make money to cover costs. Well, that was one of the things. The housing authority has never upcharged, so they have no money to do the repairs to these systems. So that was another one of the things. There's just so much we couldn't find and very little that we could.
And so we have, we've been doing it?
We've been making the repairs over there.
We've been making the repairs.
Yes, ma'am.
We didn't own the.
Right. Well, we could argue all day about did we own it or not, but still, it's inside the city. And we want to take care of those people just like we do everybody is. They're no different to me than someone who lives.
And when I first saw this in the packet, my big question was, does this all have something to do with where we're headed with housing authority property? And I haven't heard any conversation about that in four years since I've been on the council. But, you know, you have conversation about other things that are happening, like.
Right.
The apartments that are being built and some of those people are going to be transitioned out there.
This came about solely by, from the state level, looking at master meter operators, specifically housing authorities. Because there's a lot of them in the state of Georgia that operate their own gas system. And they have a certificate for that, but this one didn't. And that's how this conversation got started.
So was part of the conversation, what we're going to see down the road as we move these folks out of the housing authority to the new location, which I think is owned by 30 families or something like that that's going to be moving? And I'm assuming there's a lot, well, there's some other folks that will remain there for now. But is that on the horizon at all? I'm looking down the line because I'm not sure if that's a question for you or a question for Ed or a question?
I think going forward, everybody's going to pay their individual bills.
They'll be individually billed in the new units.
Right.
Outside of the existing housing authority, any new units that are built, those individuals will be city and West Point customer.
And I guess if there's any utility allowance that's allowed for those, that would be handled through the housing authority. I don't know if that's a program that's going to go away or not. You'd probably have to ask somebody on the housing authority about that.
For now, what is supposed to happen to those units that are over there now occupied as West Point Housing Authority?
That are occupied?
Well, I thought are unoccupied, the property. What's the vision, long term and immediate term?
I don't have any discussion about the future of the property.
Oh, really?
I mean, they will not be able to use the units once those individuals move out, those units may have to be, they will be demolished at some point soon.
Okay, so all of that, all of what we know is housing authority, West Point Housing Authority, the traditional housing authority property, 12th Street, 11th Street, MLK, down 13th and whatever, down in the bottom. All of that is targeted to be demolished?
If they build new units. They can't increase the number of units, though. If they build new units and that unit getting replaced, it can't be occupied.
If who builds new units?
The housing authority.
Okay, so like.
Let's finish up with Sammy. We can address this if you want to.
Okay.
But we're on the subject of the utilities right now, so.
Are you done? I'm done.
Okay, good.
Let's ask.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So did you have another question? I mean, this is really a question for the housing authority.
Okay. I can address that to Coleman or somebody on the housing authority.
That'd be good. All right, then next item is the 2023 millage rate resolution, and we'll call on Richard.
And then? Yes, sir. Y'all should have three documents in your packet. One of them is five-year history of the digest that's living, PT 32.1. And the resolution is the recommended resolution that we're asking y'all to pass. But I go back to the five-year history. On real and personal property, 2023, we have 700, 971,187,872 dollars. But the values, one vehicle was 1,181,400. The gross digest was 798,369,272 dollars. Less the exemptions, 284,702,043. So that gave us a net digest of 513,667,229 dollars. The gross maintenance and operational mileage was 13.1310. The rollback for sales tax was 5.0270. So the net millage rate is 8.1040. With that, the total levy for 2023 would be 4,162,759 dollars. That's an increase of 2,727,160, 99.17% increase. The next form that you have is that PT 32, this is something of what I just went over, showing the amount of reassessments. But it's still going to be net that our digest is 513,667,229. And the 2023 millage rate recommendation based on this computation will be 8.104. Last year, 2022, was 8.337. So taking into consideration of the reassessment, that's how I roll back in the state competition of 8.104. And that is the staff recommendation that we set millage rate going forward for 2023. Any questions?
Richard, can you speak to the vast change in the digest from 2022 to 2023?
Yes, ma'am. Mostly that change is due to some of the abatements that over the last 20 years that are coming off. So that's why the increase in the digest.
Okay, I figured as much with those top two numbers being double or more.
It was basically, it reaps all the benefits of those abatements that everybody was getting the hollers screaming about.
And so do we have any that are ongoing or does this clear them completely?
I think it's, it's still some percentages on some of the most recent ones, right?
Yeah, so we have relatively many projects that have been skated.
But nothing to the tune of these numbers, I don't think.
I mean, the Mobis project was pretty big. You know, it was almost 1,180,000 dollar price.
The EV plant we just discussed?
There'll be, there are some abatements given by the county.
So that's good news. The tax digest continued to expand and our whole backside being about.
Definitely.
And it also gives us some breathing room for the first time that I've been on council.
Absolutely.
I look around apartments and top of department heads, they're in desperate need of supplies, equipment. And hopefully this gives the opportunity to meet some budgetary needs, including possibly a raise. But I think, you know, I like to see a raise where I see.
Yeah, the millage rate went down from 9.2570. And if you all go with the recommended rollback this year, it'd be 8.1040. So that's a whole mill. So you're right that it's a trend of going down.
And then a mill over a mill and it's going to be static five years?
Yes, sir.
That's always good news, and I'm glad to see you embrace reduction in taxes and. Or at least not.
We've always embraced.
We had some long conversations about that over this, in the past, so. It's good to see the change.
Anybody else have any comments on the millage reduction, Rose Rec Resolution?
It's happy it's happening.
It is.
That's right. Okay, then the final item is the Unit 3 Phase 1 Villages at Harris Creek Final Platte and Street. We'll call on Dennis.
What can you have for you in your packet? This is the regular procedure that we have whenever a final plan is to be approved or any subdivision development, mixed-use development. They are splitting this in half, so we're looking at a request of 50 units that will be part of the Phase 1 to begin the approval process, the street naming. It's already been inspected for the streets. That has been done very well by Mr. Rodrick Palmer and Tony Hicks of our department to make sure that these streets are up to standard. That's part of the recommendation. And also will be up to the municipal planning board to make the decision that they are in favor of this or put any conditions that might be required on that. So you have that in your packet just for to consider for your August 14th meeting or approval.
In that new phase, do they have any additional amenities?
No, no, the amenities that were put in were for the whole build-out for that, so.
Any other questions for Dennis? All right. The items on the business meeting for August 14th.
I apologize for being late arriving, and I missed Ed's report. But I'm interested in whether there was any update about the sewage spill on 11th Street? Or that showed up on 11th Street. I don't know where it's coming from.
No, I didn't hear any update on that. It's still addressed and the reports we've done to the EPD.
And when you say addressed, it's been?
Repaired.
Repaired. And in keeping with my concern for infrastructure deterioration, do you have anything in place that's going to address problems like that and other problems with infrastructure that we continue to see evidence of? Especially in the older sections of the city.
I mean, our staff is working on infrastructure every day in various parts of the city. So we have a budget for such spills as that or leaks as that. And they address those, you know, in their report and make those repairs as needed. As far as there being some, have a plan to replace the sewer system. We don't have anything like that in place currently, but we do budget for improvements each year.
In your professional opinion, you feel like there's a need for that? For us to do something a little more major than just maintenance-type repairs?
We do.
Or addressing issues as they pop up?
Same concern for us, that's more than I can. But on the annual basis, we do, on an annual basis, to do certain areas. We have budgeted an amount to address certain areas that may need that. So on an annual basis, we do quite some of the other construction, more than just a repair. But yeah, certainly, if there was funding available or a way to provide for those infrastructure fixes, we'd start to be aligned to take advantage of those.
But currently, are there any grants or anything that we could proceed to move that process forward?
Not any that I'm working on.
And the posting about the spill? I realize there was something posted down on the outlet past the ball fields. But is there any reason why there was not something posted up where it was very obvious that there was a spill from the older and actually site of raw sewage being in that ravine? Any reason why nothing was posted there?
EPD has certain requirements on that. And I like the sand we should address that.
Typically, you do it a little downstream. It doesn't really affect right there. The water carries it. Their downstream is all covered until it came out down at the ball field. That's where they put it. That wouldn't want kids to get in at the ball field and play either.
Well, I wouldn't think we would want kids or anybody else to get in at where it's coming in, where it's within, you know, visual awareness of.
Yeah.
Pretending raw sewage emptying in here. So you're saying EPA doesn't require you to post it where it's entering the system? The water runoff is just downstream?
Typically, the water carries it down.
Yeah, I understand it carries it down. And if I stand out at the river and it's dumping in there, I want to know if it's going there. But I also want to know if it's going in right here in the ditch, you know, that I'm walking past.
Once it's, the leak is stopped, it pretty much clears itself downstream, pushes down. We typically put them just a little bit downstream. So we had to go beyond where it come out of.
come out of those coves, and especially where the kids was going to play around the breakage.
We're simply making the assumption that the only danger is where kids are going to be played, and that there could be a lot of city that could accidentally be affected by that, not even know it because it's not posted. But anyway, the EPA knows what they're doing, if they tell you, you don't need to post it anywhere but down there, that sounds like a problem to me, but I'm not the EPA, so I'm glad I can get a better understanding around that. Thank you.
Okay, the items on the business meeting for August fourteenth are the am waste agreement, the surplus city property, West Point Housing Authority Utility Agreement, the twenty twenty-three millage rate resolution, and the Unit Three Phase One Villages at Harris Creek Final Platte and Street. Do we have any announcements, Mr.?
I have one. It's for any seniors that are fifty-five and above. There's going to be an elderly abuse and fraud summit, and it's going to be August the tenth at the LB Sykes Gym. You have to register. The spot is only for about eighty seniors. They need to call two five six two three seven six seven four one, extension one fifty to register, and also lunch will be served. That's two five six two three seven six seven four one, and it's for anyone that's fifty-five and above, and it does not matter where you live. Thank you.
Any other announcements? All right, need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay. No favor? I guess someone's got to be.